Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome you here tonight. Mrs. Byram, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Ms. Quintern.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Get rusty.
Yes, I am.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, Dr. Horne, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Hearing that there are no adjustments to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion when you approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now, dropping down to the consent agenda. And for the minutes and financial reports, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the listed documents as presented.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now, the monthly operating bills?
Yes. I make a motion. I reviewed the bills this month, and I make a motion that we pay the bill for, basically, May,
Okay. Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now, at this time, we will drop down to recognitions, and I will turn it over to that board.
Thank you, madam. Chair members of the board. At this time, I ask Dr. Wolfrey to please come forward, and we are really pleased to be here this evening to wrap up our strategic planning process, the initial phase here, and bring forward our draft. And before we went to that component, we would like to take a moment to identify and recognize the members of our various teams. And Judy, take it away, please.
Thank you. It is such an honor tonight to be able to recognize all of our community members who've played such a big role in the draft plan. They've exhibited an incredible amount of time to this and commitment to our students, to our families, to all of our schools and to the community. So it's really an honor to be able to recognize each of them. Each of these teams began their work, well, we started back in January and then in February with our strategic planning team who met three days early on to draft the framework for the strategic plan. And then they met again another day to hear the action plans that each of the teams had developed. So we're going to begin with recognition of our strategic planning team. These 30 members dedicated four days to developing the aspirational framework for the plan. And Dr. Horneck will be reviewing each of those with you tonight. But we'd like to recognize each of the folks on this team. It was truly a microcosm of our community involving students, teachers, other staff members, community leaders, the faith community, parents, and oftentimes folks who filled multiple roles within our community. So at this time, if anyone who was, anyone here who was on the strategic planning team would stand, please, to be recognized, I'd like to applaud them. Thank you so much for your commitment to our schools. And then, following the work of the strategic planning team with their initial draft and framework of the plan, our action teams, there were five of those, began work developing the action plans that would help our schools actually accomplish the goals and objectives that were set forth in this very lofty plan. So we're going to begin with the first action team, which was the Instructional Programming Action Team. This team was led by Dr. Renee Honnaker, our Director of Secondary Instruction. And if we could have all of those team members stand to be recognized, please. And if you would come forward for a picture, please, and over on the risers, if you would make your way. While they're making their way over, this team was charged with developing action steps to meet the objective that all students will graduate with the skills that they need to realize their greatest potential. A lot of the work in this area focused on higher-level thinking, developing a growth mindset, and providing consistent learning opportunities for our students across our entire school division. So they had a lot of work to do. They did a great deal of research. They broke those components down and were able to come up with some action steps that would lead all of our schools through this process and allow our students to achieve their goals. The second area of the plan is safe learning environment. And our action team was led by Susan Ailer and Johanna Colson. If they would stand, please. Rounds of applause. And all of their team members. All of the team members. Shall we have all of you come forward, please, for a picture?
Yeah. Go ahead and go to the next one then, too, Judy.
Yeah. And while we're doing that, we'll also bring together our Stakeholder Engagement and Support Action Team. That team was led by Nick Sedano, the Principal at Gordon Barber Elementary. So if we could have the Stakeholder Engagement Team stand as well and be recognized? And Mr. Sedano, if you and your team could make your way over. Just to share a little bit about their work, the Safe Learning Environment Team focused on ensuring that all students benefit from a safe and vibrant learning environment. This included physical, mental, emotional, and social well-being for our students. And this team identified steps that will guide the school division to assess the current status in our division and assess our current practices and strengthen those processes, practices, and the communication to involve all of our families as well. Our Stakeholder Engagement Team organized their work around action plans related to preparing our students for the workforce, strengthening our partnerships with our families, and collaboration between the schools and community to support achievement and student wellness and enhancing extracurricular opportunities. The fourth area of the plan is staff recruitment and retention. This team was led by Yvonne Dawson, our Director of Human Resources, and Gary Honnaker, our Chief Operating Officer. You guys would stand. And all members of their team, please. This team looked at ways that we could retain, but also recruit and then retain high-quality staff who reflect our community. And in particular, they were looking at ways that we could recruit and retain veterans, retirees, and career switchers. This team did a great job of tackling this by organizing their action steps around the ideas of creating a culture and a climate that support growth and unity, promoting Orange County for all of its unique qualities, creating an environment that promotes professional growth for all of our employees, and developing a compensation package that will attract and help us retain our employees. And the last team, but certainly not the least, is our Technology Action Team led by Jessica Sarver. If all the members of that team would please stand to be recognized. And this team focused on making sure that our students have access to technologies that transform their learning experiences. And in addition to that, that our students learn to use technology responsibly and ethically. This group worked on steps that the division can take to embed technology into the everyday learning of our students, and then also how we can set expectations for the appropriate use of our technology that are understood by our students, our staff, and our community. So again, a huge thank you to all of you who've been involved in this process. Your commitment has certainly been inspiring. And I think the high level of interest and involvement is just a testament to the outstanding community that we have here in Orange County that truly supports learning for all of our students.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And I'd say thank you. It's nice to see that a lot of you could be here tonight. And it's really great to see how the community and everybody came together to work on this plan. So I'm excited about it. So, all right. With that being said, we're going to drop down to public comment. And at this time, I will open public comment for the S.R. III grant money. So, Mrs. Byram, has anyone signed up for, to speak to this?
No, ma'am. We have no speakers for this.
All right. I will close public comment related to the S.R. III grant and plan. And moving on, I will open public comment for tonight. Mrs. Byram, has anyone signed up for regular public comment?
Yes, ma'am. We have four speakers. I'll call up the first two, and that's Mr. Philip Clardy and Ms. Ashley Jacobs.
That was quick. Evening. So the last thing you probably want to hear about is graduation ceremony. But I would like to say one thing. And this, so I'd like to start with just kind of a little vignette from the beginning of it before the ceremony actually started. My mother was excited to see my son graduate, got there very early, got the best seat right up front, right by the camera. And so there was a conversation that took place, which was really kind of mystifying to me, where the person operating the camera made a comment about something about somebody from the crowd jumping and taking the camera or something like that, which I thought was very strange. I just assumed that that was going to be the strangest thing I heard that day. But it turned out it wasn't with the speeches, as you know, you know, a little bit spicy. So what I would like to say to you as the board, this is my observation, not about the speech, not about the students who spoke, but about the reactions of the faculty. So by my estimation, about two-thirds of them cheered enthusiastically and actually gave a standing ovation at the end to a speech that I would consider to be, well, not inspiring to the graduating students, which is typically what a graduation speech is about. Thank you. So rather than being inspiring to the graduating students, I found it actually to be rather insulting to the members of the audience, and more importantly, their boss. That their boss being the members of the community who are in the audience, who are very directly insulted partly by saying that, you know, three members of this board should resign, which surprised me that two-thirds of the faculty would stand and cheer for that. Because we, members of the audience and the community, are actually the ones, as you know, who select our board members. So in retrospect, the comments I heard at the beginning about somebody from the audience tackling the camera made me realize there is a profound childishness among a significant part of the faculty and/or staff. I'm not sure who all those people were involved, but just let it be known that the parents and the community have noticed that there is a profound childishness and ridiculousness and just sheer lack of, you know, wanting for an inspiring speech for the students. So with that, I would just give you one unsolicited piece of advice. And that is, it's obvious that there's some sort of problem. And when facing a group of people who are causing problems, it's not necessary to get rid of all of them. It's necessary to get rid of the right ones. I'm not in a position to know who that is. You are. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ashley Jacobs, and I am a parent of three kiddos in the elementary school here in the system. And I also am a former youth program developer for the county. And I wanted to come to you tonight and ask you to reconsider your changes to the policy on the distribution of materials for community events. Kind of being on both sides of that, the change that's been made that no longer allows flyers to go home with, in the backpacks with students has made programming particularly difficult, but also makes it hard for parents to maybe know about some of these activities or programs. And I think more than just even families knowing about them is the implications that happen because of that. So a lot of these programs are tied to either grant dollars or organizations that will continue to fund the programs or support the programs based on attendance of the programs. And without the attendance, the programs aren't going to be able to continue. So prior to COVID, we used to be able to have an organization come to the school system, ask for approval, and then they would create the, they would make the copies themselves, bundle them, and whatever number was necessary for each of the schools that the program pertained to distribute to the schools. And then it would go in the teachers' mailboxes, and they would distribute it to each student. And I understand that, first of all, that can be costly. However, it comes at a cost to the organization sponsoring the program, not to the school. And it is something else for teachers to do, and I know that they're literally have every minute of their day filled. But we're serving the same students, you know, the same kids in the community. And it really is the most effective way to spread the word. And so when COVID happened, there was a change made, and now the information's posted on a link on a website. And it's just, it's hard as a parent to know about that or to remember to check it. And oftentimes, when you do, the deadline has passed or, you know, something, it's just not as effective. And if the decision is made that we cannot revert to the old way of doing it, I would ask that the school system would consider a more regular communication with a link to that particular page where the program materials go just to remind people. It's just really important, and I want to see these programs continue. And I think because there's an approval process in place in the beginning, it, you know, it does, I can't see what would prompt the change or the continuation of the change if it's maybe not working as well as it was intended. So I just ask you to consider that as the new school year approaches. And thank you. That's it.
The next two speakers are Jennifer Schmidt and Laura Daniel.
Good evening. I just wanted to be here to publicly thank those who were involved in the differentiated speech pathology pay scale. I know it's something I've been up here advocating for a few times. So the differentiated scale is much appreciated. I know the space is not always filled with gratitude. So I wanted to just be up here thanking a lot of those who made that possible. And yeah, I think I just want to say thanks.
Good evening. Once again, I'm standing before you to urge Dr. Horneck and the school board to reverse the change that has happened at the high school. Once again, again, this, I don't know if any information has been updated, so I will give that clause. But the change to go from semester schedule to year-long schedule is going to hurt especially two different populations of kids. It's going to hurt those kids that are failing a class, and it's going to hurt those kids that are accelerated gifted learners. For example, with a year-long class, say, where it's affecting English nine, all right? A kid's English nine, they've failed the first nine weeks. They've been yanked out of an elective class and put into the recovery credit class. Meanwhile, they're dealing with eight classes, not four classes. And then they're being stuffed into a classroom to recover the credit of that one class, such as English, to be taught not by an English teacher, but by the program on the Chromebook. After how many people complained about COVID and online learning? Now, there's going to be a teacher in the classroom. I said that before. But that teacher may not have the endorsement of what that kid is failing. So you're going to have a classroom full of kids that everyone's going to be failing different classes, which is ironic to me because to teach in a secondary education system, you either have to have your bachelor's in that subject or a minimum of a certain amount of credits to teach that subject. Yet, where you're taking a kid that's failing, and they're going to recover that credit online in that system, which means they still got to keep up with the eight classes that they're doing, or the seven classes now because they've got the failed classes and the class that they've been yanked out of. And then they're not being taught by a teacher. They're being taught by an online program, which means if they fail again and they fail that English nine, they either are going to take summer school, which not all kids can come to summer school, or they're going to push back their graduation on time rates, which means they're going to have to take it the following year. Again, what this plan actually hurts, it hurts those kids that fail and are failing to grasp a subject. And then it's going to hurt those gifted and accelerated kids that like to go, can go from, in that two-semester school year, can advance forward. Orange has worked so hard to get onto the exact alignment of the community college schedule so that kids can take a college class, fall semester or spring semester, and it ends exactly before, you know, winter break or before the summer starts, all of that. And we're going away from that. So instead of progressing forward, Orange is taking steps backwards. And once again, I urge you guys, please, say no. No for the kids that this is going to hurt. Thank you.
And there are no more speakers.
Hearing that there are no other speakers, I will declare public comment closed. Moving on, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Horneck.
Okay, thank you, madam. Chair members of the board. At this time, we will start with letter A. Consideration of proposed policy revisions that we brought forward two weeks ago. And see if there are any questions.
Madam Chair, I was looking at policy G A B. And if we could pull that up, Ms. Byram?
It's really hard to hear you guys without the microphone.
So essentially, this policy is discussing acceptable computer use by staff members. And on page one, under guideline one, it reads, "A prohibition against use by division employees and students of the division's computer equipment and communication services for sending, receiving, viewing, or downloading illegal material via the Internet." I would like to move to remove via the Internet as illegal material can be acquired by various means, including USB flash drives, CD-ROMs, et cetera. So I would suggest that we make that change. Additionally, under the prov, if you could scroll down, Ms. Byram, towards the end. Bear with me. I apologize. Under the provisions, I wanted to add an additional statement which would establish that staff must copy the student's parents or guardian on all electronic communication except for when parents opt out. I know I had mentioned this to the board earlier today. And after thinking about it a little bit further, amending it to stating electronic communication with the exception of classroom assignments must copy the student's parents or guardian on electronic communication unless expressly approved by the superintendent or his designee.
Well, let, my suggestions, we break it down into two things. You've made two suggestions. Let's put them on the table and discuss them. And so rather than just do it once, go ahead and make the motion for the person.
So I would move to amend page one, guideline one, that statement and deleting via the Internet.
I'll second for discussion.
Seems very reasonable to me.
I don't see any negative effect on that at all.
Okay. So I think, let's go ahead and vote on this particular one, okay? So motion to accept this.
So I moved, and you seconded, so can I call the question?
That's right. Thanks. All right, you did. All right, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. All right, now the second one.
So the second amendment would be an additional numerical point somewhere in there, where it's one, two, three. It would just be an additional number. And I would move to insert provisions establishing that electronic communication with the exception of classroom assignments must copy the student's parents or guardian unless expressly approved by the superintendent or his designee or when the parents or guardian opt out.
Do you want a second for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second for discussion.
So this would just prevent an appearance of division approval should unsolicited communication partake between a staff member, it could be any staff member, and students within the school system. Obviously, most employees would be falling within, you know, appropriate guidelines. However, I would like to be proactive and just ensure that communication isn't normalized to gain trust and maintain secrecy.
And I can see that. I agree with that. But problematic is, are we infringing on... But problematic is, are we infringing on rights here? So, my suggestion would be that we refer this back to legal counsel before and bring it back.
I would, I would make that motion.
Okay, aye?
Yeah, that, that's fine with me. I, we might put something there. Firstly, it's electronic communications. This is talking about, it, we, this whole thing is talking about computers. Well, electronic communication is this thing. So, we got to get it more clearly designed what we're talking about. I, I don't think we can do it tonight. I think our attorney can give us some advice. I think the idea of informing parents is, is, is excellent, but, uh,
My only, I just-
How, how we can legally do it. In other words, can I tell a teacher what she's doing at nine o'clock at night? That's, that's a real good question.
And I would just like to clarify that this, this policy does talk about electronic communication at computers. Um, if it's a school-issued cellphone, um, school-issued tablet, it could be anything beyond computer or email. So that's why, um, I think it's important that we get clarification.
I was just at a conference and that particular subject came up. So it was great discussion centered around that. So that's why I suggest that we turn it over to legal counsel. Um, because I'm, I'm not sure that, in some ways, it wouldn't be infringing on rights outside of the schoolhouse, if that makes sense. Even though it's a device, a school computer or whatever, so, okay? Alright, so Ms. Byram, we will turn this over to our, um, attorney for guidance and information to, to be brought back at, um, a later date.
Okay, um, so that would conclude, um, my amendments to G A B, uh, under a policy I K B. This policy is about homework. Um, and I guess, Dr. Horneck, my question would be maybe directed towards you. Um, under page one, general guidelines, was wondering if we needed to include verbiage to allow homework as extra credit? Do we need to specify that, or as it is written, would that be also allowed?
Judy and Renee, feel free to jump in, um, if you need to. I think, uh, for this policy here, ma'am, I think, um, my personal opinion, uh, is that homework should not be used for extra credit in general. And so if you're asking me if we could add a bullet there that would say that, I wouldn't have heartburn over it. Um, I do think much of this can be managed as far as, uh, our administrators setting the practice and the expectations in their building as far as, um, following through with homework. So I think, I guess really the question before us is how, how deep, um, into the weeds do we go with the policy? And how much is left, um, to make our administrators follow through with our teachers? And so that's a personal opinion I have, and also I know that part of the reason we took a look at these is, uh, they became very, very detailed, uh, during COVID. Um, and probably got down into the weeds a little bit too much. So, I, if you're asking if, um, this one does not directly preclude the use in that purpose, um, although I don't feel that it particularly fits, um, within the guidelines that we've established. So I think the, the omission shows that we, it's not something we are going to use it for, and our administrators can follow up on that. But if the board, um, would rather have something about homework with respect to, um, extra credit, I think we would be amenable to working on language in that way as well.
Forward?
Um, I would have no problem adding it in there. I don't say, I mean, we talk about disciplinary purposes as far as extracurricular or extra credit. I think it would basically fall very similar to that first line as well.
If we, if we're going to add it, that's where I would put it. It would, it would just be a, an extension. It's not going to be used for disciplinary purp- purposes and/or extra credit.
Yeah, I think it needs to be very specific and precise, it's just extra credit.
So we're, we're saying not be used for extra credit, is that what we're saying?
That's correct, sir, yes.
I, I was saying it should be, it should be allowed in there.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was, yeah, I was complimenting Chelsea's, what she said.
Well, right now, if I understand it right now, it doesn't speak about extra credit at all, is that correct?
Correct.
I'd be honest, in my, as a teacher, I would just le- leave it up to the teacher to decide. Because everything's a special circumstances of some kind. So I, I want to follow guidelines for the teachers so that we have some consistency of what we're doing. But I don't want to tie the hands of the teacher either, so I, I would tend to prefer to leave it just the way it is.
Yeah, I'm of the similar mindset. If it doesn't preclude the use of extra credit particularly, I wouldn't want to ban the use of extra credit in case there's, you know, extenuating circumstances in the classroom.
I think with the, the policy that sits in front of you in draft form allows us the flexibility to make sure that, um, our teachers know what the expectations are and our administrators have clear parameters on what to follow. Um, so I'm, I'm not concerned, um, with what you see in green. And so if you all are okay with it, we can absolutely make it work, there's no problem there.
I have nothing to add, Madam Chair. I have nothing further.
Okay. And I'm actually good either way. I, I, I understand both sides. But not ever being a classroom teacher, you know, I, I would have to lean on teachers, their discretion and what they choose to do. But on this one, I'll, I'll say it's the, is the will of the board. So, at this point, um, I'm will of the board. We have two, I guess four, and one leave it is.
And Madam Chair, I would move to approve, um, the policies before us, with the exception of policy G A B as we're seeking legal counsel.
Okay. So moved, all in favor?
Yeah, I understand. We were approving all the policies except the one we're sending to the attorney. I, I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay, I will second that. And, I'll call for the vote. All in approval, say aye?
Aye.
Those disapprove? Alright. Motion passes. Alright.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. We will, um, as well come back to you. And I can tell you that policy G A B and its corresponding policy, can't remember exactly what it was, I I. I know it's, um, the, the staff side of it, um, was also updated again, I I. B E A was updated again recently, so we were going to have to bring that back to you, there was an additional update. And so, there's no problem with going back and looking at their language and working with legal counsel. Next, no, Ms. Byram, uh, worked through this calendar at the last meeting. And we are now seeking approval for the twenty-three, twenty-four school board meeting calendar. And now this would stand separate to what we're doing this month in July, this starts in Ju- in June. Okay, so seeking approval for the twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, meeting calendar.
And I'm good with it.
I move to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school board meeting calendar.
Can you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This time, I'm going to invite Mr. Sarver to come forward. And he has some information regarding a recommendation for our upcoming school bus purchase.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm here to, uh, make a recommendation regarding the purchase of the fiscal year twenty-four school buses. Uh, we issued a, you know, request for proposals, uh, to about twenty different lending institutions. And we received, uh, four responses, three of which met the requirements. Excuse me. Um, the, the best proposal, the most competitive proposal was from First American. They're a firm that specializes in municipal financing, um, with an interest rate of five point one four percent, with an annual payment of three hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars and seven cents. And I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Are there any questions of Mr. Sarver?
For those in the audience, this is something we do annually. We have a plan for providing buses, we have to provide, how many a year?
Seven a year.
Seven a year, uh, to just keep up our fleet. Uh, this is a program we've worked out with the supervisors and we just initiate it, uh, annually. So, I, I'm definitely in favor.
Okay. Um, um, Chelsea and Melissa, um, are you guys going to, are you good with going ahead and doing this? Because we, um, have not really tentatively set up a next meeting date because some other things. So, um, I don't know if, how that ties-
This process can be a little cumbersome because there, it does have, the contract, once it's drafted, does have to be reviewed by counsel. So if, the sooner we can start the process, the better. But if you all would like more time to consider it, we can make that work as well.
I'm good, the ladies are good, okay? So, a motion, please?
I move to through, approve the three-year municipal purchase agreement with First American to fund the purchase of seven school buses for the, uh, fiscal year, twenty-four school year in the, um, total amount of one million, forty thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents.
Okay, thank you, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Okay, and at this time, we are, um, very happy, pleased, honored to bring, uh, draft strategic plan forward. Uh, and you have, the presentation that will be on the screen, um, is an abridged version of our deliverable, uh, that we brought to you. And, um, I'd just like to start by echoing what, uh, Dr. Wolfrey said at the beginning with thanking our, all of our members of the strategic plan team, as well as our, uh, multiple five action teams, uh, that graciously took on this work, um, and spent many hours coming up with a document that I feel is, uh, very comprehensive. It is, um, tight enough to, uh, to set parameters, yet also, uh, the flexibility to adjust and adapt, um, to changing realities. So I'm really impressed with the work that had come forward. We'll start on just a little bit of a review as we went through the strategic plan. Um, during the first three days, uh, the strategic plan team, uh, agreed upon a host of beliefs that you can see here before you, as well as a set of parameters. And worked, um, tirelessly to agree upon a new mission statement that we're bringing forward to you in this draft. Our goal in this mission statement was to provide some branding in this identity as who we are in a school system, who we aspire to be, and what our ultimate goal is, which is to maximize student opportunities. And we want to do it through experiences that are very, very high quality. And of course, led by educators that are, that are of the highest quality as well, invested families and supportive community partners. And so after that work, um, the strategic plan team identified five key areas, uh, that they would like action teams to work on. And there was instructional programming, a safe learning environment, stakeholder engagement and support, staff recruiting and retention, and technology. And so we'll give an overview, uh, starting with instructional programming. Um, again, this was the group led by, um, Dr. Honnaker. And the first, we set and agreed upon an objective, as well as some strategies, some ideas. And so this was the information that was given to the action teams, um, to work with. And so ultimately, the action team came back, uh, with a series of proposed action steps. Um, and as we go through this, I would like to just remind, uh, the folks in the audience, as well as the, as the board, that this document, uh, will not be static. So this document is not the begin-all and end-all. Um, as we address areas and complete them, uh, there will, there's likely going to need to be more things that we would want to add in based on new realities. And so this document is not, again, not going to be static. This is really the starting point, and this is the backbone moving forward. And so underneath strategy one, for following with fidelity, a set of academic expectations, the, uh, the action team in this area, uh, went through, and these are likely not all of the action steps that are in the deliverable. We wanted to give, um, some, basically some highlights, uh, as to what the action team came up with. As, when we go to strategy two, in instructional programming, again, they had a host of, um, action steps that they would like the school division to take. You will notice in here, uh, there is a, a, a large use of vocabulary titled growth mindset. And so the, the best way that I can, um, and hopefully the easiest way that I can define it is to, is to use a, a Winston Churchill quote. Um, and basically, it's a mindset that says that, um, success is not final and failure is not fatal. And so when you are looking and have achieved a certain level of success, that is not the end game. There is always something else to look forward to, uh, the next step you want to take. Uh, and if you, and if you struggle through failure in any, in any way, that is not fatal. Uh, that is not the end game. And so it is really trying to promote that mindset with our staff, our students, as well as our community. Um, that we are, we are not going to sit back and lick our wounds and complain whenever we have, uh, failure. Uh, we're going to get by our bootstraps and, and improve. And when we have success, we're not going to reap those rewards and continue to just rely on those and go back on them. We're going to continue to move forward and try to find the next thing, uh, to help us achieve an even greater level of success. And so when you see ideas about a growth mindset, that really is the, kind of the backbone of it. The success is not final and failure is not fatal. And so this is a lot of the work that the action team did for, and our action team won. And they also took, uh, a look and identified a host of outcomes or benefits that they feel that this division will reap based on if we follow, uh, to fidelity, uh, some of these action steps. And I, and I certainly agree with all of these, uh, benefits. And, um, instruction is one of the most, it is what we do, it's what we're here for, uh, to help our students achieve success. And focusing on a growth mindset, focusing on, um, assessments that are rigorous and relevant, focusing on, um, enhancing college and career readiness, um, not just through C T E. Um, that's kind of the capstone for college and career readiness, but, uh, embedded through all of our disciplines, um, both our core and our elective, uh, disciplines. And so we really want to, um, establish that overall culture and climate that fosters, success is not final, failure is not fatal. So that's an overview of the work that, uh, the strategic plan, the action team did in instructional planning. The next group, uh, was the safe, um, and secure learning environment. And the strategic plan team established an objective that we want students to benefit from a safe and vibrant learning environment that's going to promote, um, physical, emotional, mental wellbeing. And they came up with a set of draft strategies, uh, for behavior expectations, culture of communication, and involving families in decisions regarding social, mental, and emotional health. And from that work, uh, the, the, uh, action team, using strategy one, um, identified, uh, a host of action steps here. Consistency, communication, training, reviewing discipline data, code of conduct, those are a few. Okay, again, those are not all of them, this is abridged for, um, being a little bit more, uh, pithy this evening. With strategy two, um, creating a clear communication regarding physical wellbeing. Um, the one that I would like to, to identify here is, um, something that I believe we need to do. And we have a committee, a standing committee already for our safe and supportive schools, um, with looking at the, uh, the physical safety of our buildings and, and conducting an audit in, um, in conjunction with our local law enforcement. As you all are aware, and I'll remind members of the board, as well as the community, we are, we are, have already begun the process of investing in this type of work, uh, using security grant funds to do security vestibules at the entrance to our buildings. security grant funds to do security vestibules at the entrance to our buildings. The work that we're going to be doing this summer to do the walkway connector at Unionville and Lightfoot, and then next summer at Gordon Barber. We are currently speaking with the sheriff's office about the possibility of, of working with them to get a anonymous tip line, reporting line that we can do in conjunction with them. And at the high school in particular, we're going to be doing some considerable changes to security with the addition of adding staff, as well as creating an actual security, physical security space, an office space and hub that will be outfitted with the equipment that they, those security officers need to be successful so they can help us with many aspects of security, such as radio inventory, radio use, monitoring our closed circuit TV, and a host of other things that they really need to be doing. Also in here, the, the group felt it was important to continue to evaluate our character education program. That committee has already been meeting, and thank you to the many members on that committee that are here this evening, to determine and discuss strategies that we want to use to go forward as well, to, to help create and mold our next, and future next door neighbors, right? That's really what we are doing here. We, we want these young people to be ready to go for the real world. And then I believe there was another strategy here, Laura, strategy three. And again, engaging with families and having open and transparent, being open and transparent is a theme throughout all of these action steps. And communicating resources and making sure that parents are involved in decisions regarding social, mental, and emotional health are a priority that come from this action team. And the final slide here for this group, the benefits, with safety, concise code of conduct, expectations, communication, student interaction and opportunities are all areas of outcomes and benefits that they saw if we follow, again, some of these, these action steps to fidelity. Next, we'll move to the stakeholder engagement and support group. And this one was led by Mr. Sedano. The strategic plan team, during our work in February, established the following objective, as well as a draft strategy for developing community partnerships that are going to support and help us move forward with students' education, their career, and their extracurricular pursuits. And so this particular action team took the strategy that was developed, and what you see in italics is kind of a, a sub-strategy. They, they took the strategy and broke it into components to make the work a little bit more tangible and a little bit more pertinent and targeted. And so this particular strategy here with developing partners that enhance and support workforce readiness, and they discussed a lot about developing a K-12 readiness plan, working with local community organizations to survey our local industry and our, and our local businesses, to see what kind of skills they currently need in students and where they see that going. Embedding workforce skills into the K-12 curriculum, again, there's sometimes a misnomer that that is exclusively the role of a CTE teacher. That's kind of like saying, teaching reading is only the job of an English teacher. And neither of those could be farther from the truth. Workforce readiness and those skills need to be embedded throughout all of our various areas, core and elective. Expanding business partnerships and continuing our work to come up with basically an actionable plan where we can move forward with a space for CTE expansion. This group also then talked about, their, their kind of second prong under the strategy was to strengthen and promote meaningful family partnerships, fostering collaborative relationships between families, educators, and the community. And this work really transitioned well into the family engagement cohort that we had gotten involved in earlier in the winter. I believe it started in January. And we got a, you all received a, a report at the last meeting, at the last work session. But working on family engagement plans, again, school-level surveys to garner feedback, ensuring that we have family resources as well as curriculum posted, as well as a formalized process for engaging with our volunteers and to make sure that members of the community know the opportunities that are available and to make sure that we are welcoming them with open arms. And then a fourth prong, the group looked at fostering collaborative partnerships to promote academic achievement. And so they had some action steps, like creating a community engagement committee, advertising volunteer experiences. They focused more on the student end, collaborating with community organizations to have parent workshops to focus on student health and academic success, advertising school events on one calendar on the division website. That's going to be much easier now with our streamlined platform. And as well as collaborating with, collaborating with many community organizations, as well as medical professionals to increase access and awareness for vision, health, dental, and, and other aspects of physical and mental health and safety and well-being. And then finally, the group, a portion of the group looked at enhancing extracurricular activities, specifically by leveraging community partnerships. And they have some recommended action steps of conducting an audit on our facilities to identify areas for improvement, designated, you know, division-wide spirit days, bringing positive culture and climate, what it really means to be, to be proud to be OC, partnering with community, community organizations for families to gain awareness of available opportunities, as well as working to expand elementary school extracurricular activities to the greatest extent possible. And out of all of these various, and this is just one kind of portion of the list, but you will see in your deliverable that this, this action team spent a considerable amount of time identifying a host of benefits that they see possible as we follow this plan, again, to fidelity. And so I'd like to thank all the members of that team. Moving forward to our fourth action team, this group led by Gary Honnaker and Yvonne Dawson, recruiting and retaining high-quality staff. In February, the strategic plan team identified the following objective of ensuring that all students are served by highly qualified staff members and a diverse group of staff members who reflect our community. And the strategy that was built at the time, again, recruiting and retaining staff members, particularly, and up to and including our veterans, our retirees, and our career switchers. And so I'm, I'm happy to report that we are already taking one step in this direction with respect to our veterans, our folks who are, who come to us and have the, and able to provide the appropriate forms and can prove the service to the military and have an honorable discharge. We are compensating them, we are giving them up to step 10 on our pay scale. So if you leave the military with an honorable discharge after eight years and you are going to switch your career to teaching, instead of starting on step zero, you're going to start on step eight. Okay, and so we, we've done that now for our employees, as well as folks that we are onboarding. So that's one example of how the work in this plan and the parameters and the, and the priorities that have been set have led us to make a change or an enhancement to what we're doing. Within this group, I'd say the best way to explain this is the group split a little bit in half, where a portion of the group really focused on the recruiting aspect, and the other group spent more time on the retaining aspect. And so this group here, this was going to be more about the retaining process. And this, the group talked a lot about developing and implementing two different types of surveys. One, an employee survey that can help us analyze and share results and ultimately develop a plan to address areas of concern that may exist within our sites, as well as an idea that came forward out of the group, stay interviews. And so this is an idea where you don't just interview or survey the folks who are leaving to find out why, you survey folks who are planning to stay to find out why. And kind of, it's, it's a great idea. Implementing a communication plan and a formalized mediation process in accordance with school board policy to help us navigate issues that come up and to move forward successfully. And then on the other side, with the idea of recruiting, of course, we have a number of platforms and programs that we're currently working in, including our Future Educators Academy, which is our lab school, working with JMU on our Grow Your Own initiative. And so this group wanted us to continue to work to expand any type of partnership we can with colleges, universities, and other vocational areas to increase our placements and our educational opportunities. Using some available resources, particularly in the Office of Economic Development and Tourism, to help us update and improve recruiting materials, come up with a marketing plan and a strategy to really not just highlight what we do well in the school division, but also what makes it great to live and work in Orange County and what makes us unique. And so out of these two strategies, there was also looking at creating, creating an environment that nurtures employees and really taking a look at assessing our current mentoring program and making adjustments and revising plan with input from teachers. Identifying model classrooms for teachers to be able to go into and actually watch a master teacher, kind of as a peer observation model or a learning walk, so to speak. Structures for training and cross-training for our support staff so that if and should somebody leave, we're not stuck in a rut and starting at step zero again, so to speak. We want to be able to cross-train and build capacity across our school division. Targeted and relevant professional development, clear selection criteria, innovation, and personalization and individualization, and opportunities for growth and enhancement. So that was a lot of work that was likely done mostly by the retention group, but it's also, this crosses both. The, these, these action steps here are really important for both the recruiting and the retaining. And so the final slide here will identify, I'm sorry, we have one more, the compensation package, of course, we have retention incentives. Again, this is asking us to take a look at milestone years, as well as if you have a bachelor's degree and you're on the way to earning your master's and you're halfway through, so you have a bachelor's plus 15 hours of master's work, could, working into the budget potentially, that that could be an increase in salary there. And then when you get your master's, that's a little bit more of an increase. Assessing our compensation and benefits for comparability with other divisions, as well as the county. Really selling and helping folks understand the full nature of our compensation package to educate current and new employees on the extent to what we offer. And really investing fund sources to offset individual costs of licensure, license renewal, and professional organization membership fees. And so I'd like to just give a shout out because I see her in the audience this evening. So Deanne Marshall is here. And a, last week, I guess, Deanne, we came to the Ed Foundation, and we discussed a strategy that, seeking their support, that they could help offset the cost of particularly initial licensure for our incoming employees who have never been licensed in Virginia. A host of our new employees will be college graduates who are coming to us for their first time entering the classroom and getting licensure. They will start with us, and their first paycheck will be sometime in late August. But their licensure fee of $100, potentially $100, is due before that. And so a lot of times, this is a part of a larger financial, financial constraint, particularly if these individuals are looking to move from out of state or out of county into Orange. And so John Licata and Deanne Marshall, who is here this evening, both graciously and individually ponied up $1,250 to provide the school division with $2,500 that we can put into the account. And as we are bringing new employees onboard for licensure, we now no longer have to pass along that cost to them. We can take care of it in-house. And so Deanne, as well as John, he's not here, Deanne is here. I'd like to thank you all for that work. And so not only are we appreciative, that's also a wonderful example of how the work that this team did is showing us as the administration, so to speak, and the leaders, what the priorities are and some, some tangible steps that we can take. And that's one example of many that we're already doing and will do, thanks to the, the fact that we have a roadmap for success. So again, thank you, Deanne, appreciate that very much. And the last slide here for our recruiting and retaining group, they identified, and this is not all of them again, but the, these are some of the highlights of the benefits that they identified, all the way from employee satisfaction to camaraderie to a larger applicant pool. We need that ASAP, staff retention, and increased awareness across many areas of our school division and what it truly means to live and work in Orange County. Last but not least, technology and digital citizenship led by Jessica Sarver. Obviously, this is an incredibly important action team and work because the world is becoming ever more interconnected and technology is ever more a part of all of our lives, including our students. In February, the strategic planning team came up with the following objective of ensuring that students have access to technologies that transform learning while also practicing ethical digital citizenship and responsible use of technology. Those are, those are very, very key words. Yes, we need to harness and not shelter kids from technology, but we need to show them where the pitfalls are and actually help teach them what it means to be ethical and responsible and a true digital citizen in this age. And that is something that if, if you go onto social media, you'll see is definitely in need in many areas. And so I really thank this group for this work, the strategies that the strategic plan team identified with the citizenship and responsible use of technology in the curriculum. And as you select curriculum and train your educators, the students, and importantly, the families on that curriculum, so we, they all have an idea of what is going on in the school. Moving forward, this group came up with a host of action steps with establishing a division-wide committee to evaluate instructional technology, resources, and develop age-appropriate curriculum for digital citizenship, responsible use of technology, and I would argue, most importantly, student safety. Vertically aligned curriculum documents, review the digital citizenship curriculum annually because it changes and the relevance and the practicality for the future change. Ongoing professional development for teachers, establishing a digital honor code, looking at digital behavior expectations and aligning them with our code of conduct and our schoolwide behavior matrix essentially for how we want kids to behave in school. This group also discussed providing training for educators, staff members, and students. Again, they came up with an idea of creating a technology advisory committee as a component with our technology plan, establishing a digital citizenship page on our school website and to streamline access to information and resources, offering classes for families. Okay, this falls into the training, teachers, and students. And partner with outside organizations, sheriff's office, social services as an example, to offer programs on citizenship, student safety, and the responsible use of technology. And out of this work, the technology group identified a host of benefits. Number one, first and foremost, actually having processes and procedures in place to address issues, hopefully leading to a reduction in poor digital-based behavior, so to speak. Curriculum that supports a growth mindset, as well as the five Cs that have, that the VDOE has put out. Establishing clear consequences, hopefully increasing instructional time because our teachers would be spending less time having to address poor behavior. Community engagement and proactive education rather than reactive intervention and remediation. And so with that, we would like to extend our deepest thanks to all of the community members who the, who contributed to the development of this plan. I hope you can see this evening how this document will not be static. Again, this is a starting point, and even in draft form, has already led us to consider various ways that we can improve, and we look forward to over the years and in time, provide routine and timely updates to the board and to the community on where we stand, what we've been able to tackle, what we're left outstanding, where the challenges are. And I foresee our strategic planning team- And I foresee our strategic planning team, that was not, you know, a few weeks ago, that was not the last time that we will meet. I foresee that happening routinely over the next years. This work will, this document will truly guide our work moving forward. Decisions about staffing, budget, school improvement plans will all be directly tied to this strategic plan so that we remain in alignment. And again, this was a process that involved the community and I'm just eternally grateful for all the members who were here this evening, all the members of the board for your support in going down this road. This was definitely a different approach to handling strategic planning. And I, for one, could not be more proud and honored to be able to present the hours' worth of work that went into this well-thought-out, professional, timely, and appropriate draft strategic plan. So kudos to all of our folks who are here this evening. It's proud to be here to highlight what you all came forward and again, humbled by what you were able to accomplish together. So thank you very much.
All right, comments from the board? Mr. Hopkins, can you start with you? You want to?
Okay. Well, first, it's a wonderful document. It exceeded what I expected if you really want to know the truth. I've only looked at it for a couple of days, but there's nothing, there's nothing really that I can complain about except, I guess I have to find something. When you talk about, when you talk about five Cs, I think in this document, we should say what these five Cs are. Don't leave the public wondering what the heck they're talking about. At least define what the five Cs are. I'm assuming there's something like critical thinking, creative, creativity, communication, collaboration, character, curiosity. Well, I've just named six, so I know I'm not right.
We can certainly add that in. It's critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creative thinking, and citizenship. And those, again, are the five Cs that were identified a number of years back by the Virginia Department of Education. And so we can absolutely define those, that's not a problem at all.
Yeah, I think I would kind of go along with what Jim's saying, just anywhere that there's abbreviations, they kind of need to be clarified and spelled out so that the community understands what is actually being said.
No problem.
I do have a suggestion though. If we could have a specific public comment for the strategic plan on our July 10 meeting so that we can hear from the rest of the community what they think about it as well. And then have the vote after that.
I'm in agreement with the other two actually, same thing, definitions. I would like to hear, I know a lot of people had talked about scheduling conflicts being an issue as to why they couldn't participate in either of the groups. So I would like to hear from the community just from feedback as it's now finalized and its final draft here. And then there is something else, but I can't, it was a lot to comb over over the weekend. So I appreciate the time, but I would like to have that additional feedback.
All right, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, I agree, I think it's a good document. I read over it, I liked it, I can agree with some of the adjustments with spelling out what the five Cs are and that sort of stuff. So yes, and besides Mr. Jones is not here tonight, so we wouldn't have the vote tonight anyway. So I don't see that being a problem, having a public comment before and then doing a vote. So I'm good with that, so thank you, thank you. All right, with that being said, Mr. Hopkins, do you have a Blue Ridge Governor's School report?
We got one more.
Oh, we do?
Mm-hmm. More policies.
Oh, another policy. Oops, sorry.
I will keep this short. These are some new policy, a new policy drop that has come forward. And so we are bringing these to you for a first read, again with seeking approval on July 10.
Okay, so did you folks have a chance to read over these?
Yes. Melissa? I didn't really see anything that stood out. It seemed like a lot of them were very minimal changes, just specific words. I really don't have anything that stood out to me.
Ms. Hopkins?
I looked them over. I tend to agree with Melissa. I didn't see anything, some, most of them were minor changes. Nothing stuck out to me, but I'm, if other board members have things they want to address, I'd be glad to hear them. But I, you know, I don't think we need to pass these tonight.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
Yeah, I'm gonna say mine, I haven't combed through as closely with a fine-tooth comb, but I did read over and most of them, again, it was editorial or the legal references changed, so.
Okay. All right, we'll put that on the next agenda. And moving on. Now, Mr. Hopkins, would you like to give your Blue Ridge Governor's School?
The Blue Ridge, Virginia Governor's School had a joint school board meeting on May 3, 2003, at 1:00 PM at Best Western's Zion Crossroads. Let me just, for the people here, let me give you a brief, quick view of what the Blue Ridge Governor's School is. There are 19 governor's schools in the state of Virginia that operate during the year. All of them are cross-counties. Ours involves seven counties. I'll just name them, Fluvana, Goochlin, Louisa, Madison, Nelson, Green, and Orange. And I always, when I got involved, I always said, well, why are we with these counties? And what I've come up with is all these counties have one high school, so when we get together as a board and try to figure out whose share is what, we basically are all, since we all have one high school, we share everything equally. One of the things we did at the meeting is we went into closed session and had an evaluation of our director, Wanda Elliott, and Dr. Horneck and the other six superintendents got together and do that evaluation, and we do it each year. This is her first year as being, she's been in the school as, but not as the director. This is her first year as a director, and she did something that really impressed me. She put out a questionnaire to all the adults that worked under her and asked them to rate her performance, which is something nice to do. But what surprised me is she put it in our documents, which makes it a public document. So I thought that was, I don't know what word it is, but to have your teachers evaluate you on your leadership ability and then put that out in the public is, takes a lot of, I don't know what you call it, but I admire it. Second thing is, we're gonna, the budget's up here that we passed. I'll speak a little bit more about that, but she recommended a 5% increase for the staff that we have, and we really only have about five staff. The rest of the teachers are in individual county schools. They do get supplements for teaching Blue Ridge Governor's School things. Let me talk about, just a little bit about the budget. The Blue Ridge Governor's School has, is budgeted for 645 students. So that comes down, where's the money come? We actually get extra money in addition to what we get for them to be here in the county. We get $1,705 from Richmond for these 645 students. That gives us a little over a million dollars, and that basically funds us. That's what this is, where the money, what, right up the top few lines shows what our income's gonna be and how it's gonna be dispersed throughout the year. And unless there are any questions, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins, appreciate that. All right. I don't think there's any other business at this time. So with that being said, can we have closed session certification, please?
Pursuant to 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following. Discussion of personnel or the performance of a division employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees, and discussion of pupil personnel as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A2 for early admission, waiver of compulsory attendance out of county, out of district requests, and student discipline.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And we're going to session. Session.
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Little call please.
Ms. Sanderson?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mrs. Quinturn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the vote as follows. Five yes, four yes votes, no no votes with one member absent.
Right, thank you. And so, all in favor by saying, oh, never mind, never mind. My mind has totally left me. I got the calendar on my brain. So are we good for the 10th?
I think, I think we need to vote on the certification first real quick.
Okay, sorry. All right, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. I don't want to forget that date.
I think I threw you off when I didn't. Do we need a, do we, I guess this is your bond's area.
I'm totally forgetting that. I apologize. Oh, sorry. I'm just trying to skip my mind through that. So Dr. Horneck?
Yes ma'am, recommend approval of the personnel actions as presented in closed session.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the recommended approval of the personnel agenda to include resignation, salary adjustment, rescind offer of employment, transfer, employment, and summer school, and coaching appointments.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, so sorry. So, just going back, trying to remember, was it the, the next meeting that we were talking about? That we needed to do something with? Am I remembering that correctly?
I think combining. We were talking about combining into one.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we've got that all straight before we leave here tonight, so.
July 10th is the date. Was the first on the calendar.
Right, it's on the 19th, but that didn't work for...
I won't be available.
Right, it didn't work for you nor...
The 10th?
No, the, yeah.
No, I can do the 19th.
You can't do the 19th?
I can.
Okay, but I think Mr. Jones couldn't. And Chelsea?
I'm fine.
Okay, and so I can do the 19th, so, okay, so we are good. Okay.
I'm out, I'm out as well on the 19th.
That's right, Dr. Horneck is out.
That's right. That, I was like, I knew it was something that we talked about. Dr. Horneck won't be here the 19th. So, that, that was the reason I was trying to remember. So is there anything pressing on the next agenda that we can't skip into maybe July?
Personnel.
Okay, and we talked about maybe doing a special call meeting?
Yes ma'am.
If needed, for personnel.
Yes ma'am.
So is everyone good with that?
Yes. You know, maybe we, I mean, it's up to the will of the board, but all we need is three people here.
Right.
I can do, that week of the 19th, I can do almost any day that week.
Yeah.
I'd be fine with the 22nd.
If it was gonna be in the daytime, I can do the next week.
Okay, all right. So we will leave that up to the discretion with Ms. Bowrim and Ms. Dawson as if it's needed and when it's needed, and hopefully get out a date, couple of dates that we can do that, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that was pushed there, because I knew...
In other words, we're only gonna do personnel that day, so we can tell the public that's what we're gonna do and
Right.
It'll be fine.
Okay, all right.
Have it at 10:00 or in the morning, or 9:00, or whatever you want to have and get it done.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that that was all clarified before, and make sure it was on everybody's radar, so nobody forgot. Was my hurry to get to that little piece there, okay? All right, well, now, since I've tried to skip over all of the other, is there any other business?
I told Laura, but I'm gonna, July 10th, I'll be on a New England trip, but I'll arrange to be available by phone, or if we can work it out, we're gonna see if we can do a video thing. But I, you can't count me as part of the quorum.
As part of the quorum, okay. All righty then, so, all right, with that being said, no other business? I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.